Yeah, that's true. It is gonna be that way for a while. That's good. All right, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
So Bill, I'm concerned that we can't actually fulfill this agenda tonight because we did not warn it. It's supposed to be forty-eight hours in advance for open meeting law. We can have the hearing because that was warned. So the hearing part is fine, but I'm concerned that the-
There's not anything really else in here.
No, other than the minutes.
It's really the hearings.
Yeah.
That are, let's say-
We could introduce ourselves.
Business act.
Introductions are just polite.
Frankly, I don't see that there's any reason not to carry on. If we're gonna have these hearings, you may as well have all the content that's before and after, which is almost inconsequential. It's the hearings that are consequential. But I'll leave it up to you. So we can introduce ourselves and start. Nikki?
Nikki crib.
Ken Carter.
Bill Irwin.
What? Gary Foot.
There you go. And we'll open it for any public comment. Is there anyone that would like to say anything outside of the hearing that we have scheduled? All right, hearing none. Now let me just write down who's here.
And I can do the minutes.
Good. Okay, great. Thank you.
The, maybe do the hearings before. What was your name, Paul?
Are you okay with that, Luke?
I, Luke.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will start with Sean and Lacy Lane, three foot, three, excuse me, three lot subdivision. Is there someone here to speak to that?
Sean and Nancy LaRose.
LaRose?
Okay, sorry about that.
S H A W N?
Yes, sir.
Got that right.
Yeah, I don't know where the Lacy Lane came from. That's not the road you're on, is it?
That's probably one of those automatic when you do a little bit of a type.
Yeah.
She thinks it knows better than you do.
All right, and so we have with us, your name again, sir?
My name's Christian Jablonski, I'm a consultant with Bernard Jarvis. I'm here for LaRose's and then I'm also here for the second.
So-
Give me your name again.
Christian.
Nice name. Thank you.
J A B L O N S K I. And so we have some materials here.
Not sure.
This one, any of them are? These are not. There's, uh, these are for this one, Sean and Nancy.
Okay.
Oh, you're over there.
Stephen Cooper.
Very clear.
You guys and my, the the cabinet, the others going to review. And then we did produce some Mylar as well. We want to use that as an additional property review. Um, and I can go over the project and everything as already.
Okay, yes, I heard three lots subdivision. I can see three lots.
Yeah.
And
Yeah, we have, we have-
Vermont Route 108 almost entirely is the road relationship. Don't see any other roads.
This would be just south of Pugbo, but the hill road.
Okay.
It's seen in the location map in the top line.
Must be, that's gonna be dissolved there. And just in love. Here's the road.
Maybe can you talk about this third?
Yeah, I've got to give a summary.
So I got a sum of it. So you can start.
Yeah, absolutely. So good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Christian Jablonski with Bernard Jarvis. Uh, tonight for the LaRose's property, we have a three lot subdivision. Lot two, clean proposed lot with development for a single family residence near the road of Route 108, excuse me. Being ten point one acres. That will also serve as providing right of way for the other lots, lot one and three. Lot three being ten point two acres vacant preferred. There is an existing call out with the deed for a smaller lot across the, along the road. That's going to be dissolved into that lot as well. And then lot one being the remaining lands, twenty-nine, twenty-eight acres for an existing camp up there. Um, we're not proposing any other development besides lot two and providing the fifty-foot right of way for access to both of those other lots. Potential future development. We have reached out to Vtrans also, submitted an application for them. And a state wastewater permit has been already received. So I brought that in today as well if you want to review. That will be needing to be recorded. And there are open questions.
Um, I guess I'm curious about that land lot, lot. That's the only access is gonna, road frontage is gonna be that right away?
So yeah, we're establishing a right of way for that.
Does that present any limitations on lot one having a simple right of way through another lot? And no road frontage?
So establishing this in the survey and then should they ever convey that lot to their son, because that's the intent, a lot to move under something to be able to go on with that. The lawyers would, you know, make sure that right of way is established and that way this wouldn't be an issue. That is the existing trail that goes up through the hill to get to that camp already. So it's already an established drive. We're just making that right of way established in the future for access, people access.
So that would be a part of the deed?
Yes. They would reference our survey plan. Which would be recorded in the calendar.
And is, are there any existing structures at all?
So there's a camp up on lot one in the back. Small camp along the wood line in the middle.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, uh, there's a spring that serves the house across the road. But there used to be an old barn, but that's, that's since gone.
Mm-hmm.
And the woods is being shuttered. Up in the back, the woods is being shuttered, but there's not really any other.
Haze that little meadow, don't they, along the road or?
Somebody must. Yeah, I'm sure they could provide some insight on that.
Yeah, Jarvis is, yeah, keep it bold now.
Do you have any concerns?
Oh, that's my family.
The only thing Vtrans has set on the access is that if they wanted to serve or you to access the other lots, they just have to upgrade it to, to that standard for the twenty-four foot standard instead of the twelve. Which there's plenty of room there that is in excess to do that.
Is that lot three developable or?
Uh, it could be, hard to say. We haven't done any testing or anything like that to prove that. Um, but I, in my opinion, I don't see why. Certainly plenty of room with ten acres to find something.
Are there any utilities other than those along the road that obviously provide service up and down Route 108?
Not that I'm aware of. But I mean, for the lot two development, it would just take power from the pole across the road.
Right, and then you have water permits. Do you have them for all three lots or?
So I brought in a wastewater permit. That's, that's been completed. It was completed last week. Uh, that is for the development of lot two and it means lot three and one is deferred, meaning that there's no permitted development for that. The only thing permitted for development right now is lot two. And I did bring that permit in. Um, Mr. LaRose has it. So when he just got back into state, so he's gonna bring it to the town for, for that. He has thirty days to do that, is what the permit says.
Did you say something about wastewater yet or?
I think, I think we discovered.
That was it? That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
But you don't have that on the Mylar yet or?
Excuse me?
You don't have that marked out on Mylar? Is that gonna, does that have to be on there for?
The permit references the site plan. Uh, and that plan is on the public documents online. Um, and that permit would be recorded. So what we're just showing is the proposed house area in that field on lot two in the front.
Yeah.
Um, in that area is the, the house, the septic would be a mound, and then there's a well and a location as well. It's just at this scale, it's too tight to show all those tiny little details like that. But that site plan is a public document that can be reviewed by anybody.
Should that be included on the Mylar though for that final? No?
You absolutely need a green log to show up there. But I don't think it's necessary for a survey. It's like I said, at this scale, it's just-
Right, right. I'm just thinking of this as the final document here that you brought in, thinking it was all done and hopefully they have the, yeah. That the wastewater is on them, seems like, but.
And they could move it if they wanted, you know, and they could submit another permit and then move it and then that would be referenced, right? Okay?
So the permit would be within the bounds of what is identified as lot two.
Right.
Yeah.
Not in the right of way and?
And even if you'd like, you can give a site plan for you guys to report as well, but.
We're just looking, we've got the what's it owns on here, but not on here.
Did you survey the whole property or was that?
The entire property was surveyed.
So there's a date and month on survey note number three that are not filled in. Would that be filled in for a final?
I believe it is on the Mylar.
So the Mylar is here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We're just looking at the draft.
Yes.
Whoops.
You guys don't wanna find-
Brian's fine, we're gonna go up in this.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you know.
Power.
We always need somebody with key for the back room. Ah, thank you.
Bill, does it matter if the contour lines on the Mylar?
So they are.
Are they?
Yes, so you can see the white-
I can see it on this.
Here, but they're denoted here. And those are gradients.
Oh, they're just-
And those gradients are defined.
It is kind of steep to get up to the back. Uh, there's a lot of contour lines, so I felt that ten foot wouldn't be too overbearing on the plan, so you'd actually be able to read it, um, and still make your guys' requirement for how many same grains.
And, and we do that because of the often steep pitches where it makes development impossible. And can be a limitation to future water in particular.
Yeah. And that's kind of, that's why that drive traverses to the left going up that hill.
So there's no real creek that runs through this. It runs on the other side.
It, it touches on the, the northwest corner there, um, between Hinsman and Cisco. But they, they don't really have-
And, and there's no wetlands issues over there?
I'm sorry?
There's no wetlands issues in that?
We're not proposing any development anywhere near there.
It was, yeah, it was, yeah.
There is an identified wetland polygon on the property. You'll see that on the back of lot one. Um, yeah. On the map though.
Assuming Brian notified all the butters.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the, uh, I cut the dip.
You're warning.
Okay, we're-
You pay, do you?
Lower chat.
You are proposing this to be the final hearing, it seems like.
Uh, that was Brian's hope, that we would be one and done like the last meeting.
Yeah.
It was possible.
It was warned that way.
A lot of times he's, I mean, it's, it's a major subdivision by our bylaws, so it's oftentimes we kind of have two more hearings on this, but-
Three's a major request.
Yes.
Usually three's the cap of my air.
No, we'll look into that when we do some rewrites. That's I'm willing to make a motion on this is.
Actually, uh- If you are, why don't you make it and then we can have discussion?
Yeah, I move we accept this three lot subdivision.
Our second.
All right. So we have Ken with a move to accept as a final. And a second by Nikki. Are there any, is there any discussion further? I'd just say it's a, again, uh, an example of the good work that Bernard and Jarvis frequently do. We appreciate the level of attention to the bylaws demonstrated by the plans. And it makes our job easier.
Thank you, sir, for sure.
Any further?
No.
Any further discussion? All right, so we'll vote on the motion to accept this for the Sean K. and Nancy G. LaRose subdivision on Route 108 in Bakersfield as final plan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any extensions? For passes four to zero? Very good. So we will take care of this at the end relatively.
Excellent.
Fine, and maybe if it's a few down there again.
Yep.
Have you had paper copies for the donation, make sure to bring records? Should I just leave that on my access? Okay.
Sure. Yeah, we'll have a file in the box there.
Yeah, we've got the, a copy here.
But, sorry. That's the draft.
Right, yeah, that's true.
Okay, I mean, like the other ones, I did bring a Mylar for Cooper as well for you guys for an initial review today.
You can look at that. We'll use this until we get to where we need to. All right, we'll look at it a bit and we can-
You have another one with you guys, so you don't have to.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Who here?
Yeah.
Make a shield.
I guess it's just a special, it's a special handle. This is all, all of us have news. All right, so what we have now is a hearing for Stephen Cooper, Cynthia Kelly. A two acre subdivision. This is-
Ula.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Should be two lot.
Yeah.
All right, so a two lot subdivision. And I can see one is ten point one one, the other is fifty-seven plus or minus. And it's district rural, it's a ten acre zoning. And the road frontages are quite obvious. And consistent with being consistent with the bylaws. Sir, any further you'd like to share in summarizing?
Um, I need just some like history on the property, like you were saying, Perry Cooper's old house, uh, where the dam used to be for the brook. That's since removed. Um, we are, we have submitted the wastewater filling up for the replacement areas. We're waiting on that. It's still pending. Um, subdivision being ten point eleven acres, like you were saying. And the remaining lands, they're just trying to retain for fifty-seven plus or minus acres.
That the existing house that Perry lived in there, that's there still? Yeah.
So there was a dam here?
Mostly, yeah, yeah. My boss might be saying that he used to fish down there. Guess there used to be a fishing down there.
I didn't think this was moved out.
So
they way, didn't it give way? Yeah, it's when we first moved to it.
I heard it was a state project, but-
Yeah, I think it was a combination. I think it was going and the state came in and probably that didn't use it.
There was a, a stint awhile, um, where the state was going, taking out all these old dams for the fish habitat to be able to migrate and stuff like that and a bunch of good places.
I think that's what happened.
They living there now, do you know, or?
Yeah, so the, the summer was last season, yeah.
Just the cows.
I, that's one word describing. Hopefully that, you know, whoever ran up to the house.
Have you seen my house?
Have you seen mine? Have you seen Perry's? Levels.
I was gonna say, wouldn't you have your character? I think rustic is pretty good, too.
Interesting little lot shape there. And both of the house, which is-
Yeah, the history behind that for Matthew Dewitt and Carrie Mansellat, that's kind of interesting.
It's a, a little block that runs through there, so I don't, I don't foresee that being something, something to put out. And so it is a weird little, yeah.
And that brook has changed direction too, because after that flood, that October, Halloween flood over longer, it wasn't, that messed up that whole area.
Yeah, I'm being, I want to go with the-
Okay.
But you're right, the, the ones on the south is pretty volatile. I think Cincinnati has probably hasn't really found its natural course yet.
Quite a bit of wetlands in here. Are they subject to any special controls according to D E C?
That, that's mostly because of, you know, obviously the old dam had, had dammed up all the water there, so a lot of what's around the toe of that and over to the spring, um, that's gonna have that wetland polygon on it, on it. It is, it is pretty wet, but we're not proposing any development. Basically, the bonds, whoever ends up with it doesn't try and fall those into it, they should be fine. Please.
Waterline go under the river, yeah, or?
It used to kind of flowed out there to the spring when the, when the water was full. It's since broke. Uh, need to be repaired by-
Yeah, but they, they would want to use that springs theoretically or potentially, I guess.
They, they are hoping to continue to use the spring. They would have to rerun the water line, um, hold them off in a long way and bore it, I think would be probably the best bet. Personally, I just threw it out and replaced it. Because it's in B R, so, you know, it's not like-
Not great.
Not ideal. But, peace there. Was gravity fed back in the day?
That's nice.
Perry engineered that, had one of those.
Um, I move we accept this subdivision?
Our second.
All right, so we have a motion to accept as final. Is that what your motion is?
Yes.
And we have a second. Um, further discussion? Just question about the W's, that's obviously the water service. It's not on the legend on the draw, draft that I have. I don't know, it gets, it's not a draft, but it's and neither are the overhead wires, which I think people will probably understand. I can't remember what our bylaws say about.
The overhead wires?
So you have, you have the, uh, initials O H W. And, and, and what I'm getting at is that the legend doesn't define either the W. Well, no, it does define the O H W. It does not define the W.
Yeah, I apologize for the, the water lines.
Yeah.
Show on survey flat, it's just there, almost over removed from the site plan. Um, it's central.
Hmm. Okay.
So that was the approximate assumed location where it used to be existing.
Mm-hmm.
I just also noticed that the butters across the road are not listed on, but available.
Might have done a survey on that land as well. Do it, Eric, do it.
If you would, yeah, it could be they, I mean, they're, maybe that's why, because they're, they're listed on the left side of the road. Maybe it does the same family, I don't know.
So the bylaws only describe the existing features, the proposed project and utility plan as that they are depicted. There's nothing that says that the legend has to define all of the abbreviations, so I don't see that that's a, that's, that's a nice thing for people to understand. And if it if it was abandoned, it might be a nice note to include for future reference for, you know, if there's ever a conveyance of the property, but I don't think it's gonna hold me up in my particular perspective here.
We're not proposing any development. I, I wouldn't say it's abandoned. I just noticed that it's broken whenever-
Okay.
Specifically, it's, it broke at the bank from the last storm.
Right.
They can find it.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um, why is this not a two lot subdivision?
It is.
Huh?
It is.
Oh, okay, on my agenda.
Yeah, the agenda is kind of-
Okay, okay, the agenda. Agenda says one.
Yeah.
Okay. So you have a map that's showing- So you have a map that's showing. The fifty seven acres?
We didn't survey the remaining lot.
Yeah.
We only surveyed what we needed to be able to subdivide this.
Okay.
Really, that's a depiction of it there, yeah. But it's not surveyed.
Okay, where, where, where is the falls where they come down through, is that on, that?
Where the, where the dam was?
Yeah.
The dam?
No, 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 not by the house, that damn there, no. It's going up the road. South.
Okay.
And you got a lot of people going there and picnic and stuff. And then there's a fall. Right up there.
Oh, you're, you, you must be talking, uh.
It's on the fifty three acres.
It's on the south.
Yeah, I, I didn't explore that, um, I've never gone to one of them there.
Well, I, I would think it should with a fifty three, uh, with a two lot subdivision.
No, we, we only tied into the survey. Abutting as needed for, for the subdivision and, and tied up the back line.
You know if that whole law had been su- uh, surveyed at some point?
I think he had some old map, um, I'm not sure of credibility, the surveyor, even still fully surveyed, I'm not hundred percent sure.
You were to further subdivided or sell it, you'd have to get it?
Yeah, we'd have to do more work, but the survey sixty acres versus ten acres, they don't have a difference in survey costs there.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yep.
Okay, good. Alright, so we have a motion to accept the two lot subdivision, Stephen Cooper and Cynthia Kelly. On which, at twenty one fifty nine Witch Cat Road, Bakersfield. To accept that as a final plan. All in favor, say aye.
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 And you want to oppose? Any extensions?
Yep.
Okay. So we, uh, pass that four to zero. Also. Great. So we are all set, and is there a Mylar here?
Yep.
Yes, uh, that one, if you don't mind, I'll take a copy of that sign, uh, can I leave that for Brian?
This one.
Yes.
You're keeping a full grid up on our, for, for everything?
Uh, yeah.
We've got some that we really want to.
Need that, that map, I guess.
Okay, can we get that, or this one, same?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome, nice job, Captain.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Christian.
Way to make it, way to make it on time. Long drive.
Yeah.
Oh.
And.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Wow. So, I don't know if you need any more, um, the LaRose, I got three more.
This may be.
This is the LaRose.
And then I've got some smaller Cooper.
Actually have numbers now.
I think it's, it's really actually starting to look.
Those are small ones, take one of those.
Alright, so thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
Luke, and I originally, I thought maybe we'd get you first to let you get on your road, but. We're getting paid and they're not. I made an assumption there that might be untrue. And. Good, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, great.
And thankfully, they were non contentious and they were well done. We were able then to go into a discussion of the. Future use of land maps.
Yes. And Act eighty one. The reason why we care.
Okay. The, the presentation, I think we just get through first against context to what it says. So this is part of our regional plan update, which we're doing for Act one eighty one, which passed last summer, um, in the state house. Um, so the part of that is that there are new standards for regional future land use maps, um, so that's a part of our. And now Act one eighty one, it has implications for Act two fifty exemptions and for the state designation program, so those things are now tied to the. Regional future. So they're the draft map that we're gonna go through. Um, and, yeah, I'll explain everything. Okay, but.
Great, um.
Actually, you don't need to be right into it, so.
Okay. Does it pick me up?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Mm-hmm. Um, so, yeah, first I'll do an Act twenty one introduction, I'll talk about the new center and neighborhood state designations. Um, the current Act two fifty exemptions that are in place right now, and then the opportunity that the town has to make those exemptions permanent by opting in. Um, and then our draft Bakersfield future land use map. Um, and there's some new requirements for local and regional plans, and also housing targets are a component of the new regional plan. Um, that'll be incorporated into the new town plan too, so I'll go over that. As well. Okay, so yeah, Act one eighty one. Um, its official subtitle is an act related to community resilience and biodiversity protection through land use, so. It makes major changes to Vermont's land use planning and regulatory framework, including the regional future land use maps. Um, the state designation programs and Act two fifty jurisdiction. Um, so it basically ties a lot of things that are already in place together, um, and streamlines things, and also. Um. Yeah, it has state investments more guided by regional municipal planning. Um, and there's also a few technical changes to things that are passed in the home act, um, I won't. Get into that in this, but I think Emily is giving a training in a few days about that, if anyone is interested. So I thought it'd be good to outline the difference between the regional future land use map, which is what we're talking about, and your municipal zoning map. Um, so they're separate things, um, what's on our regional future land use map doesn't have anything to do with your zoning, you guys are still. In, in charge of that. Um. But. Here's sort of a comparison, so the regional future land use map now has specific land use areas defined by state statute, so all the regional planning commissions across the state. Um, map regions as different land use categories, um, which I will talk about later. Um, they're used during the regional planning commission's review of Act two fifty and section two forty eight. Applications for conformance with the regional plan, um, so during Act two fifty review. Um, the proposed development will be reviewed against the regional future land use map, um, during regional review. Um. The future land use map doesn't, the regional future land use map doesn't have any impact on development that's not subject to Act two fifty, so it's only reviewed during Act two fifty review. And then now, uh. With Act one eighty one, the regional future land use map also identifies which areas receive state designation, so. Currently you have a state designated center, um, that is now tied to the regional future land use map. Um. And also identifies areas eligible for Act two fifty exemptions. Um, the municipal zoning map, it's land areas defined by the municipal plan and district purpose statements as written by the planning commission. Uh, determines all the standards for local zoning review and applies to all development in town except ones that are state exempt, so none of that changes with this. Um, on the next page, there's a map of your current village center designation. Um, so with the new regional future land use map, there's an opportunity to expand the areas that receive benefits under the village center program. Um.
Does that mean making the village center larger?
Yeah, so the village center itself will get slightly larger, um, and then there's also a new category called village area that surrounds the village center. Um, about a quarter mile outside, um, that receives Act two fifty exemptions and certain, uh, benefits that the center receives too.
So when you say. You can expand it.
Hmm.
Got to be boundaries on that, I mean.
Yeah, no, of course.
Like expand it out. Huge, is it more like if it is drawn here and it is not. Encompassing an entire lot, it could be expanded to include that whole lot. Can it also be retracted, so if it's drawn to indicate that it's slightly over another lot? That we actually want it to be just those near that one and not that, is that kind of what you're referring to?
Yeah, so we're reviewing it against parcel boundaries and snapping it to parcel boundaries, and then looking at like. Maybe parcels that are right adjacent to the center but aren't quite in the center and expanding it to some of those if they meet the requirements, and then. We're not removing areas from the existing center, um, but maybe we might make slight adjustments if it's just like a portion of a parcel.
Because we've had that complaint.
Hmm.
Where some lots are. Only partially included and they don't know whether that makes them a part of that. Or not, and it sounds like your. F L U's are making the best effort to make it so it's less vague.
Yes, yeah, we try to snap them to parcels and we usually do in most situations, and then I'll show you, yeah, later on, we'll look at the name app and what that looks like. Hmm. So yeah, there's some changes to the village center designation program as part of this. Um, so right now, the designated village centers will turn into tier two centers under the program. Um, I'll explain what the tiers mean, uh, later. Um, so right now, the application process is that the town is to reapply to the state downtown board every eight years. Um, that won't have to happen anymore, um, once they're mapped on our future land use map and approved by the state land use review board. Um, there won't be any need to reapply for the designation, um, it'll just maintain itself based on that.
What if? I guess if you wanted to maybe change your village center later.
Hmm.
You'd have to reapply or?
Yeah, so there's gonna be a process for amendments to the future land use map, and so that'll go through. Through us, through the regional planning commission, so, um, if you ever want to change to your village center, you could work with us to amend the map.
You'll have that power to. Make that happen, or do, well, that's, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, um, it's all basically. It's all under the RPC now, basically, and then approved by the state, but, um, yeah, it's based on the maps that we submit to them, so. Yeah, there won't be any need to reapply anymore if you're just maintaining your existing designation. Um, and then the benefits of the centers are similar to the existing benefits, um. There's some new benefits, like a state wastewater permit cost cap, um, but mostly it's pretty similar to, uh, what there is currently. And then there's new benefits for areas mapped as planned growth area and village area, so there's.
I don't have. So Gary seems to be. Different.
On the back. Backside, uh.
Maybe you've got, uh. Yeah, since.
What do you got for a back page? I don't have that.
Might be that that's a bad copy, that something got out of whack there, so it's the, uh, PDF as a PowerPoint.
Okay, right here, okay, I got it, I got it, it, the page is muscle stock there.
Your finger.
So yeah, I'm just on the last bullet here, so, um, there's gonna be new benefits for areas that are mapped as planned growth area and village area, so Bakersfield will get a village area around its village center. Um, so the area that's eligible for benefits will increase.
Does the residents that live in the village center have something given to them? To know what the benefits are, describing benefits here, but I just wonder if people even know.
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely gonna do like more public outreach as part of this process to hopefully get more people to know about the village center.
You know, see tax credit and that sort of thing, and I could, some people might not know they can get those.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, I got a question on this changes to village thing, um, uh, it's got down here, the village center. Town must reapply to the state downward, uh, downtown board. To change it?
Uh, so that's right now, you have to reapply every eight years to keep it.
I know, it's what, but it's not right.
Hmm. Yeah, so.
Getting rid of that, we're not gonna have.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so you're not gonna have to do that anymore now.
So that's gonna be out?
Yep, so now, once, once we map it as part of this map, then it'll be maintained and you won't have to reapply. Alright, um, so on the next page, I just have a little bit explaining Act two fifty. Um, so it's a public. Quasi judicial process, um, it's controlled by nine district environmental commissions. Um, so in most municipalities with zoning, you need an Act two fifty permit of, for any development over ten acres. Ten housing units, ten lot subdivision or resource extraction activities. Um, and the development of a subdivision under Act two fifty must meet ten criteria that address concerns for the environment, quality of life and Vermont's unique character. Um, so, yeah, obviously, it's kind of a cumbersome process and kind of a barrier. Um, it was identified as one of the barriers to creating housing in the state as a whole, so that's why it was a priority to do. Act two fifty reform as part of this bill and, um, in areas where. You know, towns want to see more housing in the villages, uh, having a path to not requiring Act two fifty in those cases.
Then these orange labeled offices, are they offices for? Some envi- these are the nine district environmental commissions?
Yeah, so the office for Franklin County is in Essex, um, for the Act two fifty review.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
Okay, you're gonna talk about the changes that are coming here?
Uh, yeah. Um, so part of what Act twenty one did last year was it put interim Act two fifty exemptions in place, starting, uh, last summer, so those are. Right now, uh, so the one that applies to Bakersfield is village center plus a quarter mile outside of the village center is exempt. From Act two fifty for housing projects of fifty units or less, um, so that's in place right now. Um. And on the next page, you can see the map of what that area looks like, the quarter mile buffer on the village.
Blob?
Yeah, the blue blob.
I'm just trying to picture a fifty unit development.
Yeah, I mean, obviously that hasn't happened in the past, you're here. So yeah, these are just interim exemptions, um, that go until I think twenty twenty seven, or until we adopt the regional plan, which I think will be next year, actually, but. Um, basically, once that happens, all towns get the opportunity to opt in to continue the Act two fifty exemption in their village center and their village area. Um, so if Bakersfield wants to, they can opt in to keep, um, the exemption of up to fifty units. Not requiring Act two fifty, um, in the village center and village area. Um, which instead of just being a quarter mile, blue blob will be an actually mapped area on the future land use map. Um.
Do you know if that? That not will necessarily follow parcels?
Yeah, yeah, that one follows parcels too, yeah, so we'll, yeah, we'll look on that, we'll look at that on the map in a second. And so, yeah, that'll just be a resolution by the select board to opt into tier one B, um, for Act two fifty exemption in those areas.
And now is it trends, a corridor defined as? Specific roads or? If I could see anything, is it transit?
Yeah, it's like, it's intended to be public transit, so it doesn't really apply here, it's mostly.
Where?
Where.
Transit might run a route.
It's, it's existing public transit routes, so, so most of those areas are in Channing County.
And then. when, as we are, and as you know, you're revising bylaws. Would interim exemptions have to be incorporated into bylaws or would they be maintained as only written in the Act one eighty one? And then your bylaws would reflect the final conditions expected after the interim?
Yeah, so since this is, this has to do with Act two fifty, um, it doesn't have to be in your local zoning at all. Um, yeah.
Sounds.
Okay, so on the next page, we have the, oh, yeah.
Are you really saying tier one B is sort of the one that applies to Bakersfield or?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, most of our towns have village. So the requirements for tier one B are basically having zoning, um, and some other things. So tier one B is what Bakersfield could opt into. Tier two is just the current Act two fifty status quo. Um, so.
Can anyone opt into that or?
So ti- so tier two is what you'll be by default if you don't opt into tier one B. So you can continue having Act two fifty required for, you know, ten acre developments or ten unit developments. Or you can opt into tier one B and have developments of up to fifty units exempt and uh the village center and the village area.
Is it the select board or other municipal executive that makes that decision?
Yeah, so it's a resolution by the select board to opt in.
You you think the benefits of not having Acts fifty, Act two fifty review for like a ten sort of PUD on a ten acre plot or something, I mean, is there a reason that for a small town like this, you know, like fifty unit developments aren't really a reality necessarily for us? I mean, would it, is there any reason to be better for us to stay with a kind of stricter Act two fifty regs or?
Um, well, since, since the exemptions apply to areas that are in your village zone, like your village core and your village residential, I think the idea is that local zoning is enough to ensure that these will be developed in a way that's consistent with the village. So you don't need Act two fifty review.
Okay, that's probably just a sort of thinking, but yeah.
Yeah, so here we have the draft future land use map for the village center. Um, so in the black hatched areas, your existing village center designation. Um, and then the dark purple area outside the hatched areas where we're proposing to expand the village center. Um, and then the pink area surrounding is the village area. Um, so that whole area would be exempt under tier one B if the town opts in, um, exempt from Act two fifty. And then the red uh outline is the area that's currently exempt under the interim uh exemptions.
So these lines of the pink area.
Hmm.
That would be the ultimate exemption. For Act two fifty, are they by property boundary on this map?
Yeah, um, so you can see, uh, the parcel outlines are shown in like the thin black lines. So you can see that the village mostly follows parcel boundaries. There's some very large parcels where we didn't cut it at the parcel line, um, cause that would have been like, we would have to include a large parcel. But, um, you can see it's mostly along parcel boundaries.
And then there will be larger maps so that you can see down to higher resolution where these property boundaries exist so that one neighbor knows they're in and the other neighbor knows they're out.
Yeah, yeah, this is just to look at like as a, as a town, like we wanna review this map and make sure it makes sense like to you as the planning commission for areas that could qualify for Act two fifty exemptions and benefits.
I feel like for us to really feel comfortable with that, we would wanna get like a computer where we could zoom in and zoom out and actually make sure that where the property boundaries are, that it makes sense, given what's going on at that particular property.
Hmm. Yeah, I do have slightly larger versions of the map printed out here too. Um.
Oh, yeah.
And then I also have your zoning map for comparison. Um, so you can see that the areas proposed for village center and village area are all within the village center and high density residential districts.
And then where there's conservation running over these village center, village area.
Hmm.
Uh, do they take preempt, they preempt the?
Yeah, so that's, that's the river corridor and the flood plain. So that's uh excluded from the village area.
Hmm.
Looks like most most of the conservation district is outside of this. Right? I mean, it's a little hard to tell, but it doesn't seem like any of this village areas gonna encroach onto the conservation district.
Yeah, so.
It's a little hard to tell, but that's what, kind of what it looks like to me.
Right. And we're looking at the closer maps here that kind of blow up that.
Yeah.
That you can see some of the like, this doesn't have property boundaries as well as this one does.
Yeah.
These two show a little bit more actually that's up down. Yeah, cause there's obviously a lot of people in the areas that are.
Area, yeah.
And they're gonna have the greatest number of questions. So I could see the biggest map that delineates property boundaries would be the best for people to.
It's in our BC draft future land use that one you're talking about? If that was bigger, that was bigger, maybe someday.
Yeah, if we had a computer, we could actually project it on the wall and you could see individual, I assume, individual property boundaries.
Yeah, I mean, I have the, I have the file on my computer that I could pull up if you guys wanna do that. Um.
So I think, I'm, I think for this meeting is this probably.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about.
The future meetings.
Maybe, yeah, don't even know what the decision making process is. The select board is the one who opts in or out.
Hmm.
Us.
Yeah, but you guys get to provide input on the boundaries of the area that would provide those exemptions. So that's, that's the hope right now is if you guys, um, identify any problems that you have with this map, um, then we can make those changes. Um, and then once down the line, once we adopt the final future land use map, it'll be the area that, um, the planning commission feels comfortable with.
Yeah, cause we're in the roughly two year period we'll work, probably change our town plan and then change our bylaws.
Hmm.
A, a lot of questions come up about all of these smaller lots that are in the village center. And people, again, just a lot more people and for that reason, it would be nice to give a lot more people the opportunity to look at it. Little. Yeah, objections only after.
I, I just noticed the way the zoning is now.
Hmm.
Under the high density residential. Down route thirty six. It's, it is not, uh, uh, let's see, where's, where's? Where's that? Yeah, the village area. Periferal road. It doesn't go down as far as you got on this circle, anyway. It goes down, what we have now goes down a long ways, a lot more, all the way to the wetlands.
Hmm.
Okay, and I'll tell you why. I own that. And I got a tree farm there.
Hmm.
And I'll tell you with what in Bakersfield right now. You're looking for a lot of houses to be built down the road. You aren't gonna get it. Just the way, the way it is, the way it's set up. You go and then you go downhill over there, so you don't have any.
Yeah.
Drains.
And the other thing is it should be quarter acre zoning in the areas of the vi- of the village where they have water.
Hmm.
They don't, we don't have septic, but we do have good soils right here in the village.
Hmm. Yeah.
Uh, uh, you know, and even, but you gotta go out always. Or you aren't gonna get the, uh, home. You go down, you go down Route one oh eight, you go past. In fact, right now you're taking away Larry's tree farm too. And Larry's, you got it down his forest now. Rural, rural conservation on. Um, where is it here? Let's see, rural, rural general, okay? And, uh, and then you, on Larry, you've got rural agriculture and also on, on mine down there.
Hmm.
And that's where, not that I'm gonna subdivide it, okay?
Yeah.
But I do have good soils and also Larry's over there, the tree farm has good soils. So down the road you could put houses.
Hmm.
But, um.
I think that's more of a, a decision for us to make as a planning commission, you know? This is, he's just kind of talking about regional plans sort of idea, but.
No, this is what I'm bringing up, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the area that we drew for village area is a lot smaller than your village zoning district. And we did that mostly because, um, when looking at Act two fifty exemptions, um, one of the criteria for village area was being a quarter mile from the center. So the idea that it's part of the village and someone could conceivably like walk to the village from anywhere in the village area, walk to the center. Um, and this doesn't, yeah, this doesn't change any of your zoning. Um, this is just for Act two fifty exemptions and, uh, and benefits at the state level. Um, so you can still draw your village zoning district wherever and that'll be your local land use regulations. But, um, yeah, the area that we drew for those purposes is just smaller within your village zone.
Bring that up in the future though, Gary.
Yeah, that's, that's, this is all an important discussion for our
Yeah.
zoning maps for the town. And this is just the state.
Yeah.
Act two fifty. And if you could send us, I don't know, you have our email today.
Yep.
Uh, the electronic link to these maps that would be helpful for us. I might, in a future meeting, especially during our, um, town plan and bylaws meetings or revising, start to look at those closely, cause we wanna try to avoid the mistakes where lines are kind of drawn almost haphazardly.
Yeah.
In the past to nowadays, we have much more fidelity.
Hmm.
With the, the, the property lines.
Yeah.
You know, is Emily gonna be working with us on what we do with the town plan?
Yeah, I think she's gonna be working with you on the town plan and the zoning updates probably. And I might support that too, but that, that'll mostly be Emily, I think.
Keep going on this, Gary.
All right, so we're almost at the end. The regional plan requirements is basically, um, just for us. Um, but I think the reason that this is in here is because now a new regional plan requirement is to have, uh, housing targets. So, um, the state housing needs assessment that just came out, um, in January this year has targets for all of the regions. Um, for basically how much housing is needed to address the housing situation in Vermont and account for future growth. So there are targets for twenty thirty and twenty fifty that each have a lower and an upper range. Um, and the lower range assumes a slower rate of migration into Vermont and the upper range is a higher rate of migration um, into Vermont. So accounting for both of those different scenarios. Um, so as part of what we do now in the regional plan, we have to break this regional target down into municipal targets. Um, so that's also something we're doing is reviewing these municipal targets with all of the towns. Um, they're, um, they're incorporated into municipal plans going forward. So that'll be part of your housing section in your new town plan. Um, will be, uh, incorporating the housing target. Um, and it's basically a planning tool to visualize what it would look like to accommodate a certain number of units in your town. Um, it's not, we will be, I mean, we'll, we'll be looking at progress toward achieving these since they're, um, since they're goals. But there's no like penalties for not reaching your housing target or anything like that. Um, it's mostly just supposed to be a planning tool. Um, so, um, just briefly talking about how we broke the regional target down for all of the towns. Um, so on our new future land use map, we have planned growth areas. Um, and those are supposed to accommodate a substantial majority of housing growth. So we gave sixty percent of our housing target to towns with planned growth areas and then forty percent to all of the other towns. And then among that forty percent, we broke it down based on the number of existing units in each town. Um, so that would mean that every town has to grow by the same percentage to reach their housing target. Um, and so that's what we did for the twenty fifty targets. Uh, for twenty thirty, understanding that that's just in five years and wanting to make it a little more reasonable, we adjusted for the current growth rate of each town. Um, so the growth rate from the twenty fifty targets is averaged with the current growth rate, um, to give a a target that'll sort of transition from how things are currently.
Bakersfield grew.
The model and then this is the specifics.
Yeah, so here, so yeah, here's the draft targets for Bakersfield. So, um, from two thousand to twenty twenty, there's an average yearly percent growth rate of point seven percent. And then, um, in the past few years, since twenty twenty, there's been a point four percent yearly growth rate. Um, so that probably comes out to about ten or fifteen units per year. Um, and so in the big chart, you can see the regional total targets on the bottom. Um, and then the Bakersfield target up top. Um, these targets are pretty high, um, for the region as a whole. So when we're splitting it up between all of the towns, um, you know, it has to sort of equally share that. Um, so what that looks like for a lot of towns is a yearly growth rate that would be higher than what they currently have. So, um, for twenty thirty, Bakersfield's target would be twenty eight to forty three new units total. And then for twenty fifty would be eighty two to a hundred sixty eight units total. Um, and you can see the regional targets like twelve thousand to thirteen thousand. So Bakersfield is only a small percentage, but that's still pretty significant. So this is basically just a planning tool to help think about what accommodating that number of units might look like and make sure that there aren't any barriers on the town side of things to creating housing. There's obviously so much you can control. You can't control the economic conditions of, um, you know, where and why people build housing. But, um, you can make sure that your zoning and things like that aren't creating barriers, uh, to housing, um, at the level that's needed. So.
Benefits of having a planned growth area in your zoning.
So the planned growth areas are mostly just like the biggest towns in the region. Um, it's like Ennisburg, St. Albans, uh, Richford. And so those are the areas that have water and sewer and infrastructure to have like a large portion of housing. So we wanna direct most of it to those areas, cause they can support it at higher densities. And then the other towns get less, but that's just, yeah. Um, and then this last page is just a little graphic sort of summarizing, um, a lot of these different things. So you can see the new future land use categories, um, what that means for the state designations and the Act two fifty tiers and exemptions. What that means for the state designations and the Act two fifty tiers and exemptions. So Bakersfield would just have village center and village area along with the rural areas.
So. Just to kind of thinking longer term relative to town plan and bylaw. Revision processes, does the enterprise sort of capture? Like energy projects?
Enterprise is mostly for like major industrial areas. So like industrial parks, things like that.
Not energy.
No.
Kind of wonder where they fit in, if they fit in everywhere or almost nowhere. Because if you don't have them identified as one of the ten regional plan, future land use categories, then you kind of run into, well, where do they go?
Yeah, I mean, these are mostly just broad areas. We aren't really looking at things on like a parcel by parcel level. So like when we look at how existing energy projects should be mapped, a lot of times those are just a part of the surrounding rural areas if they're in a rural area.
Okay. So when it refers in the presentation here to being eventually ten consistent land use categories. Is that these ten?
Yep, so that's this, there's, yeah, there's seven and then there's three.
It kind of doesn't add up. It's.
Well, Ham, I don't think Hamlet really counts because those are just going to be points on the map. And they won't be mapped as areas.
So general ag forest and conservation would be the other three.
Yep.
With the big blocks as the seven.
Yes.
Okay. Well, this is very interesting and it really couldn't come at a better time.
Yeah, yeah, no, it works out well for you guys with your town plan update and everything.
And, and, and then. Is there any action we need to take as a planning commission?
Not right now. I mostly just have brought these things for your general feedback. So mostly just the future land use map. If there's like any things that jump out at you as things that you want to change on that draft. Then we could talk about that now, but there's no official action that needs to be taken.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the one with the ten regional will be a future product. I assume.
Yes. So yeah, we're currently working on mapping the whole region and we're going town by town to review each town's portion of that with the planning commissions. So, yeah, yeah, it's an opportunity to give feedback that'll influence that regional map.
And then there'll be some sort of designation given to towns that they're tier one, A, B, or two, so that people will know town select boards, planning commission, zoning, whatever they might have. They'll understand this is still Act two fifty as it was before, or no, it's not because it's been exempted.
Yeah, yeah. So once, once our map is adopted, the select board will get the opportunity to opt into the exemption. If they want to for the village center and the village area.
Well, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
And it's good work. And if you, if you didn't mind sending that link to the, I guess it's, is it, is it a D C map?
Oh, the existing exemptions map.
Yeah, well, the. I guess that's what it is. It's the one that actually has the higher fidelity.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, so that's our map. That's our draft.
Okay. And you have that.
Yeah, so yeah, I can, I can send you like a higher resolution where you can look at all the parcels and then if anything comes up from that, you can let us know and we can make those changes.
Good.
Oh, Luke. First name Luke, last name Slomba, S L O M B A.
You know, waiting it out tonight too. Thanks for waiting it out tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no worries. I know you guys got a lot to get through.
Probably getting hungry.
Oh, yeah, I forgot all about, uh, all about that. Anything else? Any other questions about this?
Don't think so. I don't know if you've heard anything about municipal planning grants.
Oh, yeah, you guys got your grant for town plan. I don't know. Oh, yeah. Should have started off with that. I didn't realize you guys don't know yet.
We want to record that in minutes. That'll help. All right, so we have a I, I said minutes, you can read those, we can approve. By the time we get to these February twenty twenty five minutes, it will be August.
Well, the problem we had is I wasn't there. So right now we only have two people who couldn't approve those minutes because Gary also wasn't there and Heather is out for at least this month.
I don't need to bore him to.
So, so I've, I've heard that.
Was that the one I was talking about the, you know, school planning?
Yeah. Yeah, I've heard that if you can vote on it, even if you weren't there. Yeah. But I don't know if what I heard was accurate. It feels kind of awkward.
Yeah.
If you were, how could you vote for the factualness of something? So we'll just leave it and you have them to be prepared. Today, very late. That's why I'm a little frustrated. We can't do it because I worked hard on it today. To get both of February and March. All right, take care. Take travels.
I wasn't to be the meeting.
Right, that's why I had to take these minutes. You hers. Yeah, if you'd been here, it'd have been easy.
It wouldn't have been an issue.
Right.
Actually approve the ones you did because.
We can't do any minutes.
They aren't on the agenda.
Or.
And it wasn't worn.
Right.
I will do that again next, next month.
We'll just, we'll spend an hour on minutes.
They can.
The next meeting.
June second. I have no. June second, good for you.
Yeah.
Right, that's good for me too. I looked when I was at it today. Now, the other last thing is that we have to do these. That would do it. So.
We adjourn this meeting.
All right, we are adjourned at eight eighteen.
Hey.
Good number.